And it is 6:30, so I will call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
So move.
Second. Stand us through our roll call. Pam Nurse second, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
For it's fully Dover, yes.
Senator for the only Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Stu Kistel, yes.
Okay, thank you. And has there been any public comments submitted through the superintendent?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. What I would like to do, unless there are objections, we have Jim Gamble here with us today to be giving an OPEB advisory group report with Steve Ladue. I would like to take that out of order so Jim doesn't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
I'd probably like to reminisce and make him feel back at home.
To Jim, we'd love to have you.
All right.
So if not, why don't we jump ahead to the OPEB advisory group report?
Okay, Madam Chair, you want me to kick it off?
If you can kick it off, please.
I will kick it off. So as the Board will remember back, I think it was October, maybe November, the Board decided to form an OPEB advisory committee to kind of look at the OPEB issue and make some recommendations both on the short term and long term. And we appointed a committee that consisted of myself as Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, Jim Gamble as an at-large member, Rich Ikkinen from staff. I just blanked out on the Treasurer's name, I'm sorry.
Lori Elliott.
Thank you, thank you so much. And then Sandy Poole, who is the Finance Director Deputy Town Manager of Arlington. So we met pretty much every Monday through the month of December. And as I promised the Board, this was not going to be a long-lasting committee, so we got right to work. We met with our advisor that did the semi-annual, I guess, every-two-year actuarial study of OPEB. And we kicked around a bunch of ideas and finally this past Monday, we finalized the report. So we had selected Jim as Chair of the group because he does have an extensive amount of knowledge of OPEB. And I as Vice Chair, so we'd like to present our recommendations to the Board tonight and answer any questions and take it from there. So I'd like to turn it over to Jim.
Great, thanks. And it's certainly great being back here, Steve. We met on Tuesdays rather than Mondays, but I hope that's the last difference we have.
We have. I've heard in a different time.
Tonight, I know. We always like to have a little, we always like to have a little back and forth on the Minuteman School Committee, as I remember. So what you have is a report, it's four parts, it's 17, it's 16 pages, eight text, eight are the appendices. It starts on page 11 of the package that Julia sent out. There are page numbers at the bottom of it which start with number one, and I'll probably refer to those numbers rather than the package numbers. Julia, were you gonna let me share my screen?
You're all set, Jim.
Okay, great. So do you see that now? Or not? Oh, do I have to do it? I have to.
Not yet.
I have to do it. Okay, great. So there I go. All right, can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as I said, four parts. Part one is the background. Start with the very basic, OPEB, O P E B stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. What it really means is that Minuteman pays a share of the health insurance cost for its retirees. But in order to have this benefit, that the active employees must earn it through years of service. It's a benefit that employees earn while working but receive when they are retired. So it's deferred compensation paid out over many years. GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB 75 is a relatively new ruling that says, hey, look, the employees have earned this benefit, but you, the district, haven't paid it out yet. So you're on the hook for it. You've promised it, and we, the accountants, want you to show it as a liability for your financial statements. So that's what GASB 75 is about. Just about two months ago, as Steve mentioned, that you got the most recent GASB 75 valuation report, which puts this liability of earned retirement benefits that haven't been paid out yet at $26 million, and you've only set aside $400,000 to cover it. So the net liability, which is the number that most of the outsiders focus on, is $25 million. Is this an unsolvable problem? Are you so far in the hole that the district is in financial danger? No, this is a very long-tailed liability, and you are paying out what is due each year without too much stress. This strategy is known as pay-as-you-go or pay-go. So at the top of page three, there are some numbers. There we go. Right here, top of page three. The first numbers are what the GASB 75 valuation reports that we got show as the pay-go numbers, pay-as-you-go numbers, that they project that the district will have to pay out at five-year bids over the next 20 years. And it goes from $623,000 up to 1.66 million. So it sounds like it's a big number. But when you take out what they've assumed for the rise in health insurance, it's pretty flat. And so it means that, I mean, that the takeaway here is that these numbers going up are really due to whatever you think is going to happen with your medical insurance premiums for your retiree and not the fact that you're going to have this big wave of active employees crashing in, crashing in, crashing into retirement that are going to swamp the system there. Beyond just paying what is due that year, that you can also put money into the trust fund. You can pay in advance. And at the end of page, at the bottom of page three, there are three good reasons why you should be doing some of that, why you should be doing some funding in advance. First of all, it recognizes that you understand that this is a liability, and it will, you know, calm down the people on the Concord Financial Committee that want to say, what are you doing about it? Second, it's a way to, that it's sort of fair in the sense that this benefit is being earned now, and so it should be thought of as part of the compensation package you are paying for now. And so why not at least have some of that cost paid through the current share of, share from a assessment? So it's the sense that since you're a regional school district and the share of the assessment load changes every year based on enrollment, that if you pay at least some of this now, the people who are getting the benefit from the staff are paying for it now. And then third, these funds can be invested. This is the only vehicle that you have that can be invested in a long-term way. And so you can look forward to, if you're a long-term investor, getting some investment gain here. How are you handling this in the budget? If you go to the next page, page four, all of this comes through line 5250, the retiree in insurance. That budget line has both what you're going to spend next year in terms of retirement health insurance, the pay-go number, plus what you are putting in as a contribution to pay for future costs. And that you see that that line has grown from $569,000 in 2016 up to $610,000 last year. That's a pretty slow growth, and that your contribution has been pretty level, you know, $50,000 going up to $60,000 recently. You know, $60,000 in context of $25 million is not a big drop in the bucket. What would be a more aggressive funding strategy? We sort of come up with two numbers. One, if you really just wanted to stay current and not keep that liability from growing too much, you would be paying in about $600,000. If you really wanted to sort of chip away at that $25 million, you should be paying, you know, upwards of $1.2 million. But right now, you're paying, you are paying $60,000. Part two, that starts at the bottom of page four, talks about the actual structure, the Minuteman OPEB Trust Fund. Let's see, top of page five, two key points is that, you know, keep in mind, this is a fund, this is like a reserve fund with a long-term investment focus. And secondly, which I think is pretty important, is that control over both the contributions and withdrawals from the fund remain with the School on Committee. With a two-thirds vote, that you can vote to put money in, or you can vote to take money out. This is very different from, say, the pension fund, where the pension board tells you just how much you have to put in every year. When we created the trust two and a half years ago, we also adopted at the same time an investment policy that was geared toward a long-term investment strategy at the bottom of page five down here, that you can see what has happened, you know, because it's in stocks, we had a, you know, fiscal year 20 wasn't a great year for stocks, but fiscal year 21 was. And so, and so, and so last fiscal year that you earned $88,000 through the stock and bond market. And so this is, this is the long-term game that you put money in now, and if you get investment gains, you won't have to ask future schools, future towns to put in that money for, through the assessment process. You'll have that. See, section three goes through the assumptions behind the GASB. It's that the main thing here is really in page seven, item four. You know, keep in mind that it's really being driven by what future health insurance costs are. So, I mean, one thing to keep in mind, if, 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 that if the rules for Medicaid change, and if the Medicaid age drops, drops from 55, Medicaid premiums are much less than the private insurance premiums. Also, all of your health insurance is purchased through the Massachusetts Bay Health Care Trust Fund. I know when I was on the School Committee, we didn't really pay that much attention to it. We had talked about looking at it, but we didn't. But it's certainly something that, I mean, that's where your health insurance costs will come through. Bottom of page seven, we get to the recommendations. We first thought about it in terms of what were the guiding considerations. First is, you should approach this topic as part of a much broader financial management strategy and practice. And this is really, really conceptually no different from funding pensions, maintaining your buildings, servicing debt. Second, you should embrace the fact that you've got this trust fund set up to build up a long-term endowment-like fund that's available to future school committees to manage these payments and take advantage of the fact that you can be a long-term investor through this fund. Third, you should identify at least what those aggressive OPEB funding targets are, even if you're not going to meet them. Just to sort of let everyone know that you're fully aware of what you're looking at. Four, take a look at the valuation process that happens once every two years to sort of make sure that you're on track. Five, I would say, you're always looking for new sources of revenue, but if you find it, you know, think about, at least I'm diverting some of it to the OPEB fund. And six, you know, make sure that you start to really look closely at the Massachusetts Bay Health Care Trust Fund, both for what you're paying now, for your health insurance, for your active employees, and plus what you are paying for health insurance for your retirees. These guiding principles sort of wind up in five specific recommendations. One is, rather than having a separate target for the contribution itself, just think in terms of that line 5250, that the retiree insurance that covers both the current pay-as-you-go number, as well as what you're putting into the fund for future costs. And think of that as a multi-year plan, you know, just don't think of next year, but think, you know, six years out. And it gives us, comes to recommendation number two, which is our specific recommendation for a six-year plan. It starts out at $625,000. Rich is currently targeting the pay-as-you-go number for next year as at close to $605,000. This is 725, I mean. And so 605 plus 120 to go into the OPEB fund for future payments. Start with that 725, $725,000 number for next year. Grow it by some number. We've picked 5% per year. Plus, in fiscal year 25, when the ESCO lease has rolled off, add $300,000 there. The ESCO lease, when that ends, is going to free up about $425,000. And if you take $300,000 for the OPEB, that is going to start to give you a meaningful contribution. And you'll still have another $125,000 of freed-up ESCO money to have for other purposes. Recommendation number three, this comes out of what Acton has been doing. When a new position is added, you know, raise that threshold number on your schedule by $10,000. Just bump it up, make it part of the budgeting process for a new FTE. Recommendation number four is to sort of take what's coming out of this report and wrap it in terms of a policy. I would never, I just asked, you know, kindly offered the Policy and Committee to take up that. But a policy could embrace both the practice of multi-year planning, the supplemental funding tied to new FTEs, and then also, you know, recognize what those more aggressive funding strategies are. And then, and then five, there's a role for the Finance Subcommittee to be playing quarterly. The Treasurer, as trustee, you know, has asked, has acknowledged that, that they need some collaboration in terms of making sure that the portfolio stays on track with the very, you know, structured investment policy statement behind this fund. And also, that's the right place to be taking a look at least once a year at the Massachusetts Bay Health Care Trust and the pensions. So that's my summary of what's there. I'll let, you know, the Chair handle the conversations from here. And we can probably stop sharing my, actually, that's me. I stopped the share. There we go.
Thank you so much, Jim. Thank you. Steve, Rich, everyone who took part in this. Steve, anything that you want to add before we open it up for discussion?
No, I think, you know, Jim did a great job, and I think it pretty well, you know, absolutely summarizes what we did and what our recommendations were. And I think it's really now time for the School Committee to ask questions and see where we go from there.
Okay, and just before we get going, tell me what you're hoping to accomplish tonight.
Well, I think a couple of things. I think, one, the Board accept the report and maybe direct the Finance Subcommittee to work with the Policy Committee on a long-term OPEB policy. And then, thirdly, but not leastly, at least dissolve the committee since we did our work.
Great, okay, thank you. I'd like to open it up for questions, comments. We'll go Alice, then Jeff.
I'd like to make a motion, whatever Steve just said.
Second.
Don't ask me to repeat, I forgot.
Okay, Steve, let's try and get this down, okay? Unless, Julia, did you capture everything that Steve just said?
No, I remember what I said. I was only kidding. I couldn't remember what day of the week we met with the committee. So just to reiterate, it was a three-pronged recommendation, one, for the School Committee to accept the report, two, to direct the Finance Subcommittee and the Policy Committee to adopt a long-term OPEB policy, and three, to dissolve the OPEB Study Committee.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so let's move to discussion. Jeff, you had your hand up.
So I'm feeling a lot better about this now, because in just one minute, or not one minute, actually, Jim talked for about 10 minutes. He, I think he put this issue and possible solutions in a way that is so simple that we can get our head around it, which is something that I've had trouble doing in OPEB for a very, very long time. So if that was a very challenging goal of what you wanted to do, and this is without me having enough time to actually read the report, because I just got the packet last night, I am very impressed by that, how clearly you were able to summarize this complicated situation. I want to thank you for that, because I feel much better about it now. Having said that, I have three thoughts. I'd like to express that. I'm not necessarily looking for any answer, but these are the three thoughts I have with respect to the specifics of moving ahead with OPEB and the timeframe we're going to do it. So here are the three thoughts. The first one is that I'm concerned about increasing assessments at the same time that we are going spiking up the hill, getting to the maximum assessment due to the new building. And I know that the increase in assessments is going to be very challenging for our member towns this year and possibly for one more year before they level off. So taking on a new financial role, so we would either increase assessments or reduce the budget. So I have a little concern about the timing of this, not the plan, the timing. The other two questions, the next question is, what do our towns want? Do they want us to pay this off at a faster clip? Even though we may have to either raise assessments to some extent or decrease our services? And what are others doing in our shoes? What are other regional schools doing, and what are some of our towns doing? And I think that they're all over the board on this. But those are the three thoughts that came to my mind as you were reading through your options there. Again, the timing of it is a little bit problematic, just because it coincides with the maximum hit on the new building. What do our towns want, which is one thing we should take into consideration, but by no means the only thing? And what are others in similar shoes currently doing about OPEB? And that's, those are the three thoughts that came to my mind as you gave your presentation. And it's good to see you, Jim, and Steve, and Jim, and all the others. You did a great job in making this understandable and coming up with some very sensible-sounding recommendations.
Madam Chair, if I just might, I think, just to respond to a couple of your points, Jeff, I think, first of all, in regard to recommendation number two, and I don't want to take any of Ed's thunder when he presents the budget later, but that number is hit in the FY '23 proposed budget. So we were pretty close with that even before the committee started, so that part, I think, should be relatively painless. I think one of the major policy and concerns would be that $10,000 OPEB factor, and whether we implement it for '23, or we hold off a year, or whatever, I think that's going to, that's, I forgot, maybe four and a half new positions in the budget. I don't remember, something like that on the top of my head. So, you know, that obviously is a factor. You know, I'm not sure what all the other towns are doing. I only can speak to Concord. And when I was working in Acton, I know in Acton, we were probably going to be fully funded by 2030. I think Concord's pretty similar. And I know CC has picked up their pace in terms of putting it, putting it in OPEB, but I'm not sure what the percentages are. And I forgot what the third point was. Anyway.
So. If I might, I had a, as I reflected on this, hi, Jim.
Hey.
I knew enough about OPEB before to be dangerous. Now I know enough to be helpful, so thank you. I think, given the fact that the $10,000 component, I think, needs to be codified in policy, and our policies, you know, take three or four months to really vet out and research and get done and passed, I think it would be just sensible to have that impact, the FY '24 budget, rather than try to, like, you know, two weeks before our public hearing on the budget, try to find another $45,000 out of the budget that we have. That was just, that's my input, but whatever you do, we'll do.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't disagree with Ed on that, because it did come late in the game. And in fact, the Finance Subcommittee looked at this report last night, and there was some sentiment of, why are we just doing new hires? Why don't we just do everybody at $10,000 per, which obviously would have a bigger impact? So I think it makes sense to view the whole thing in regard to a policy and, once again, a joint kind of policy designed by the Finance Subcommittee and the Policy Committee.
Thank you. So I know, I've seen a lot of hands. I think I have Judy, Michael, then Jennifer.
Thank you. I concur. This is so well-written. This is concise. It's understandable. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, Jim. Thank you for your work. And the Finance Committee, as always. I'm on the Policy Subcommittee, and now I feel as though I can move forward with this topic. So I'm seconding what everyone is saying. Thank you, Jeff, for talking about timing, because that was also my concern, and just looking forward to making some more policy, so thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Michael?
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, the report is exceptionally well-written. I thought I had a grasp of OPEB before, but I am much better apprised of the matter right now. My question is this. What is the worst cliff that entities that are following the pay-as-you-go model are risking? What's the worst downside of continuing to do what we have been doing? I'm not sure. I'll leave it to anyone who can fill that in.
Well, I think, you know, in terms of just pay-as-you-go, I mean, at some point, you know, a wave of retirements will hit the district. And then those numbers will really ratchet up. So the fact that we put aside some money in a trust will help soften that. So if we just do pay-as-you-go, the cliff may hit us at some point, you know, it might be 10 years, it might be 20 years. I mean, who knows? It's all a factor of who retires and when they retire and those type of things.
So, so one of the things that the consultant talked to us at the first meeting about, on page 10, there is one table from that, from that report. And what's relevant to your point, Michael, is really item two, the total OPEB liability that's broken down between current retirees versus act, versus active employees. And that $26 million is split about 50/50, $13 million and $13 million between those two groups. The districts or towns that are going to have a much bigger problem have a much higher valuation lumped in with the active employees. You know, so if that number were like, you know, $6 million and $20 million, then that would be a warning flag that, at some point, you have a much larger pool about to crash on, crash on to your retirement pay-as-you-go. But relatively, this district is more balanced. You know, that the one thing you don't want to do is to hire a whole lot of people who are, you know, age 54 with nine years of service in some other place and wind up having, you know, having short employment times, but picking up all of their retirement costs.
Thanks for that answer. I am solidly in favor of putting away money now for what we can see coming along. I just wanted to illuminate the alternatives. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, we have Jennifer, then Jeff.
Okay, just one other point. I think that this liability does affect your bond rating as well. I mean, it's Just one other point. I think that this liability does affect your bond rating as well. I mean, it's it's one of those things that as it becomes part of the ledger and it's looked at as a pure liability, then it does affect what people see as your stability as a district. So I think that's something important. And I can't remember what I was going to say other than that. No, with Lancaster, Lancaster is the town of Lancaster is fully funded in its OPEB liability, but I know the Neshoba Regional School District is far from being even remotely funded, so I would suggest that during the budget process, and I agree absolutely that the whole FTE $10,000 thing should wait until the 24 budget because we just, there's not enough time. But we also need to have the discussion as to whether it's not everybody, Steve, it's just every do you, do you try to make a policy that includes replacing existing staff or is it just new hires for new positions? So I think that's a discussion we need to have as a committee and and I think we should take advantage of this time where we're all going to be going in front of our finance subcommittees of some variety and and find out what the what people think, what they think about, you know, how important is this? How are they going to feel if we, if assessments don't do increase slightly because of it? So I think we need to come back and figure all that out, but with the 23 budget, it doesn't look like this number that is recommended is going to be a problem in this budget, but we have to look forward to.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Jeff?
I I assume that it is not an op, it's a law retirements and just have people work here forever. That's not an option, right? As far as I know, Ed, what do you think? It is an option, you like said. Okay, so other than that, I think that we do need to gather a little information about what our towns think and what other regional schools are doing. But I think it's clear that we need to move forward with some version of this and getting started the sooner the better.
I I just, Jeff, I I actually once had a a lady who worked in the assessor's office that worked till she was 92 and passed away at 93, so she really didn't get any retirement benefits to speak of whatsoever. So there are people like her around.
But not all of them, including including me who's a retirement aide.
Yeah, I was like, don't let my husband hear that. Okay, Alice.
It might be interesting to share this report, not just the when we meet with the finance committees because I just did look up the Neshoba's district's recent read, recent analysis of their OPEB stuff and they, as Jennifer said, are nowhere near in this position, and I don't believe that what I understand to be the stow position is at the same level of sophistication in terms of planning. And it might be instructive or helpful to share it. They may be very interested.
Jim?
Yeah, um, would would I just like to follow up on three, three points? First, I didn't, I didn't stress it, but I think in my own thinking, the big change over the work of this of this task group was really focusing online 5250 just as one number. And and not trying to separate the OPEB funding, but instead think of it as a multi-year plan for for that whole line. And so that means that if the insurance costs for the retirees go up higher than what you think, that means you will scale back what you're putting in, putting inside the fund. And 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 then and then on the flip side, that if you have a year of flat and and into no growth in terms of your health insurance costs for the retirees for the pay as you go, then you will put more into it. So, I mean, so there's a built-in cushion there and and it gives a more predictable pattern for your budgeting that you're that you're really setting a schedule for the entire 5250 line and and letting the OPEB funding sort of either take the hit if health insurance costs go up faster than you think or benefit by the fact that they that they that they go down. So I think that's a, you know, that's a, that's an important budgeting part and it's part of thinking of this as as part of a much larger plan there. And then the second thing I've got, I've got, I've got two different Belmont points. We got to talk about Belmont. One is that Jennifer Belmont has a AAA rating. It's one of eight towns in Massachusetts. Their net OPEB liability is like $180 million and they and they managed that with with building a $300 million school and then having funding because they because they have a policy in place and they had a treasurer who was willing to talk about the fact that they've got this under control and and that they know what you're doing. So that so the liability number itself doesn't scare off the credit rating, rating people. You just have to credibly talk about it and and have a plan. And so that's why having like a multi-year plan and a policy will will go a long way with your ratings. And then Jeff, you know, I mean, if if I cared what everyone else was thinking in Belmont, I'd be in a very different place right now, so you know, sometimes you just got to do what's best for the district. And I really do think that building up a a long-term endowment-like fund that you've got control over, that you can put money in and take money out with a two-thirds vote and 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 pick up the long-term gains that you can get from, you know, from a long-term invested fund is worth it, even if even if that's not what, that's not what the other kids are doing. And and the 725 number, as as Steve pointed out, really is spot on to where, to where the budget plans were. We didn't want to hit you with a big jump, jump next year.
Any other comments? Steve, any other feedback you're looking for from the committee?
No, I think it's good. I I think Alice makes a good point of sharing this report. I know that Ed and I have to be in front of the Concord Selectmen in about two weeks, so I will share this with them since everyone's one of the groups that raised the issue to start with.
Okay, well, we we have a motion on a table, a motion on the table that's been seconded. If there's no other discussion, shall we move to a vote? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
towards falling Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stoya.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And Jim, a special thank you to you. And thank you so much for this wonderful work. We really appreciate it. And of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the.
I am kind of curious about, I am curious about the Watertown, Watertown conversations, but I can be following them them as well too, you know. You know, if you're really thinking about broadening, broadening, broadening memberships, maybe, maybe there are other towns who may want to pile in as well, but we'll see. Okay. But I think, but I think I'll jump off now. Thank you. Thank you for your time and and it was great seeing, it was great seeing everyone again.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Great job, Steve. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Much.
It was fun. It was intense and we got through it, so. That was important.
Really appreciate it. Okay. Let's jump back up to the top or at least to number four, Chair's report. Does anyone have anything that you'd like to talk about for the good of the organization? Judy?
I just wanted to thank everyone at Minuteman who had any input into the Globe article on Minuteman and S. of Text last Sunday. Here we go. It talked about the the Adult Ed program and I thought it was very well done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Anything else? If not, let's move on to Principals Report. George?
Hey there. So we have three items we just wanted to talk about. You know, we put heavy emphasis this year on social emotional learning and professional development for our staffs. Our first two professional developments of the year were conducted in-house by our staff to talk about social emotional well-being and define some terms. Just today, we had the Families for Depression Awareness come in and we're going to do a multi-pronged approach with them. They did a professional development with the faculty. They will be in, they'll be doing two programs with our students. One is about stress management. That's going to be, kids can choose to participate in that and then we're going to do another presentation on depression awareness and all will be doing those one grade at a time. They'll all be participating in getting some you know, deeper understanding of how to cope and, you know, the understanding the signs of depression and how to cope. We're also going to be offering a program with FDA with the parents in combination with the Minuteman Parents Association. So we're putting together a multi-pronged program there. And also tomorrow, it just says things kind of have worked out. We have Sandy Hook's Promise doing a presentation about See Something, Say Something. And it starts with hello. So there's a whole bunch of programming that will, that's going to happen tomorrow during advisory school-wide. It's going to be virtual. And we're looking forward to having that. Item two there is just letting folks know that we, we, last week, we conducted some hot work certification, hoping to get about 60 kids or so certified in that, you know, Massachusetts are really requiring more in terms of making sure kids and workers understand safety, don't cause a fire, even though there's a flame perhaps on site. You know, that they really understand the safety. So it's a real advantage for our kids to be able to get that while they're there in school. I I stopped by, Gene Boyd was doing an excellent job training the kids. They were very attentive, so we're looking forward to some good passing results, hopefully. We'll get those soon. And then the final item there is, and I know Ed has some information to share too, is just you know, dealing with COVID, we're seeing the spike now. After vacation was a little bit before they, before the holiday break and now we've been seeing more of an increase in students with cases. We called a Monday off last week and that was really good decision because we were able to, you know, a lot of families were able to test and kids were able to test themselves. And that prevented a lot of kids from coming into school and maybe, you know, spreading it within the building. So that was a good thing for us, although we still had kids that, you know, we've over the last two weeks, eight days, you know, have tested positive and we've needed to reach out with to parents and teachers to talk about and students about close contacts and it's you know, it's a, it's a struggle really for the, for the nurses. You know, Dr. Peralta and I, you know, have done have worked with them. Dan O'Brien's done a lot of work to help with communication. John Camerota has done a lot of work to help them organize their information. But right now, it's, it's a pretty busy place. You know, we're running test and stay, so the nurses have to stay on top of that. And then as soon as somebody gets positive, okay, then we got to track down their potential close contacts. So we're looking at seating charts and asking teachers like, whoa, that's your seating chart, but did you do a lab? Were you in group work? Was there any other kind of, who else could be? We got to look at the sports teams and see and activities to see, you know, if kids have had any close contacts from there. In the meantime, you know, we're fielding all kinds of questions from, you know, parents and staff. And the nurses also have their typical duties. We had a student, you know, who had a, you know, had an accident and we had to take care of that. So this is all it's a very busy place right now. It's been a little bit of stress, particularly in the nurse's office. Having said that, though, I think, you know, people are doing okay. I mean, it's a tough time in education in general. And the pandemic is really wearing, has worn a lot of people out. I was just reading today about the NEA head of did their survey and they're saying that one out of three teachers is talking about early retirement. You know, that's a nationwide trend. Dr. B was talking today about the increase of suicidal ideation among superintendents because of just managing all the, you know, all the stress that's that's related with this, but having said that, I'm really proud of the of the staff. They continue. Every time I talk with them, they just love teaching the kids in person. They love it. And we're, we're a special place because of it. But I'll kick it over to Ed, who has more specific information about you know, our attendance and sick rates and whatever else.
Yeah, thanks, George. I echo George's pride in our staff and I thought it would be interesting, over the last eight school days, we've had a 90% attendance rate on the part of students. Actually, that goes till December 15th through today, a 90% attendance rate from students. Since we got back from the break, we've had a 91% attendance rate of staff. And that's pretty remarkable. I was on a Merrimack Valley Superintendent Roundtable Meeting today at noon. There were 25 superintendents on there talking about, of course, what we're talking about and Whittier Tech, for instance, has 20% of its staff out. They're going to have to close school on Friday. They, she's anticipating. Some, some communities have canceled all winter sports. You know, we've had to suspend some things and limit attendance at sporting events, but we, we've I feel like we've dodged the bomb, but we're constantly dodging bullets all day. Probably not a good analogy for school safety, but it it is, people are burnt out. I've, I've never seen this in its parents, its kids, its teachers, administrators, and we really have to just take care of each other. And you know, if we need to slow things down, we're going to slow things down. If we need to take a an early release day, we'll take an early release day. The commissioner said, you know, take snow days if you need them because they won't give us permission to close school for what we perceive as really stress-related things versus COVID metrics. And to be honest with you, I don't know what those metrics are where they would approve us. You know, closing for a few days. Some parents want us to close. Some parents want us to stay open. We're trying to do the best we can on a day-to-day basis. It is a daily you know, assessment of what's going on with everybody and it's hard, so. Jeff has a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Jeff.
First, speaking as a teacher, the only thing that's keeping me going is the understanding that the surge will not last forever and that sometime around mid-February, I think the things will be looking much better. Knock on for Mica. But I just got yet again, another news story. This is on my watch, just popped up a minute ago about how schools are being battered. As you said, by all the things that are happening at once, you have to react on a day-to-day basis. And that a lot of schools are finding that the testing practices that they had a month ago are no longer working for them. Either they're not working because of the surge or they can't get the testing equipment. Or their states are telling them things that don't make any sense for them. So my, my question is, are you at this time still happy with your approach to and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to have it on the record. Are you happy with your current approach to testing and do you have the resources needed to carry it out effectively?
We, I, George wants to say something too, but I know and and cabbage onto my comments, George, but the issue with our testing protocols right now, we're, we're test and stay. Contact tracing that's required, just it, it, it just saps the time and resources of a lot of people. And there are some school communities that have gotten permission from their local Department of Health to not do contact tracing. It's just an incredible amount of time and I don't think we have any value add from it from what I could tell, but so the contact tracing thing is, is got to adjust or adapt or, and I, and I don't know how that's going to happen, but the, as far as testing supplies, it seems our test and stay folks have the appropriate number of tests to work here fine. What we hear about is individual families not being able to find tests. The, the, the other thing I didn't mention is that we do, I'm waiting for confirmation, but on Jan- January twenty-seventh, we're having an onsite vaccination clinic for students, their families. And we're going to open it up to the Lexington-Lincoln general area too. We have over four hundred people respond to our survey. As of last week, two hundred and forty or so of them wanted either a booster or vaccination, first shot, second shot. So we'll see what those numbers are like on January twenty-seventh, but so we're doing that too. But as far as the testing piece, I think, you know, we're, we're holding our own.
Hundred percent. I think the testing piece is fine. It's definitely the contact tracing, which is brutal. And yesterday, you know, we, between, as the cases were trickling in, as we were finding out about positives, you know, you know, you got to look at, if it's in academics, let's say it's seven teachers, that's seven classes, that's probably a hundred and forty kids and you got to glean out which ones that kid and then, oh, you get another positive while you're in the middle of doing that one and not, not, okay, oh, that's another set of teachers and is it the same kids again and the rest? We, we just had a resort yesterday. We just couldn't keep up with it to, to really give the kind of contract tracing that we wanted. So we just kind of gave out blanket statements and just said, okay, if you were in this class, there was a student who was positive. That's the best really we can do. We prefer to get it down to that. We were doing great, keeping it to just those two, three, four kids, but it just is brutal. It's just, it's just too much work to really to keep up with. The other day is just, it kind of broke us a little bit. You know, so if, as the trend goes down, we'll get back to that. But right now it, it, we're in that, we're in the heat of it. So that's how we're adjusting, Jeff. We just.
So would, would it be fair to say that you're very happy with your test and state policy? That's working well. But the, because of the number of cases, the contact tracing is impractical.
Yes.
So you are coming up with a, so, okay. So instead of killing yourself, which is sounds like, that's what I'm getting from the body language, okay? And I've seen plenty of that recently. You have to move to a, shall we say a less specific model of doing that? Okay. Is there anything you need from the school committee to back you up? Or to assist you with resources in order to keep things at a nice even keel as we get through the next four to six weeks? Is there anything that we can do either politically or through allocation of funds to help you out?
So Jeff, let me add to that before Ed and George, before you answer it, because I'd, I'd also like to know, you know, if you, you know, particularly when you're talking about the level of burnout at every level, you know, of, of the organization, you know, is there, what, what do you think, you know, if you had the ability to impact, it would make the biggest difference?
I'd go to a four-day school week. And, you know, have a weekend to break the cycle. Now they're saying the infection, you know, when you get infected, it's the first couple of days instead of five to seven days. But I don't know. If I had my druthers, I'd do something like that, but.
Um, Alice.
This is kind of a related question. I was glad to hear you say that you were taking care of each other. Because there's a lot of thoughts and prayers out there that aren't really doing much. I mean, people say thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers, that's just doesn't help. I wonder though, if we're thinking that the peak is coming in February or we're going to be over the peak of this particular variant, whether you could do your four-day week for a few weeks, calling snow days on Fridays or something. You know, or whatever day you want to do it, if you just had a few of them, maybe that would help get you through this really grim part of the winter.
Well, I'll tell you, the next couple of days, the data that we see is probably going to push, push us one, push us in one direction or another, because we, the data has been really ten minutes before school's over. I know how many kids, I know close contacts, I know where they're at. And then, you know, twenty minutes after school's out, we send out additional communication about it. So I think if we make that decision, we'll be making it based on solid information. And then I'd also have to work with the union about it. And the commissioner said he might give us some leeway in the hundred and eighty days, but when you listen to the governor, you know, you know, you don't get that sense of flexibility. So I don't know.
I'm seeing this as in the rest of the realms of my life as well, that right now, particularly this week, it is very tough for people. I'm not sure if it's because the holidays are far enough behind or something, but there is something different about this week than last week. And I, I am glad you're looking after each other and I hope you continue to find ways to do it. I don't know how to do it.
Jeff.
The governor will be very tough until he can't be very tough anymore. So coming one day that the data is there and is just kind of to change his mind. Until then, he has to be very tough. But bottom line from our point of view is that you're all very important to us. We have a good idea what's going on. And we're very happy that, that this crew is in charge because so far in this pandemic, we've seen a lot of very good decision-making. And if for some reason you need an emergency school committee meeting to discuss this and give you some support in a decision, then just let us know. I'm sure that we can, and for an emergency, I'm sure we can all arrange to get together. And if there's anything else you need from us, let us know, because I feel like I'm, I'm in this with you too. I feel like I'm in the school with you, watching you, dealing with all these events that are happening. I see it from the other perspective, right? Being a teacher. But I feel like I'm in the room with you too. So I feel like I'm, we're, I'm sure we all do part of your team that's dealing with this and we're, we're the, we're the team together. And if you need support or political backing, let us know.
Well, we really appreciate that. Speaking for all of us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff, what you say about all of us feeling like we're there with you, I can feel the happiness on the Zoom. You know, I think it's, it's hard not, you know, not having the ability to be able to make an immediate impact or change. But, you know, if there are things that we can do to help support you, please do let us know. Okay. Any, any other questions on any of George's report? So, so we move on to superintendent's report. Starting with building committee, is that you Ford?
That's me and I'll cheer you up. It's, I really don't see a need for the building committee to meet for a while. Winter has set in. As you drove in, you might have seen, there's snow on ice on top of all the fields. No work's going to be done now until the spring. And they've done some cleanup. They'll do a little bit more cleanup. The turf is not quite finished on the softball field, but it's stable. It's fine. And really you're going to wait till the spring when we can finish up and we'll be able to finish up fairly quickly. We'll be able to spread the loam. We'll be able to plant the grass. It's going to be nice and warm and the grass is going to grow. And everything's going to look great and we should be able to get baseball and, and your other sports on there early in the spring. So I, I just think, you know, you can not worry about a building committee report for next couple of months. And if you need one, I will let you know, Pam. Ed, I don't know if you want me to start on the Lincoln thing or?
I have the capacity projects to talk about first.
Okay.
Then I'll let you start.
Go. Then we're done with the building committee report.
We are, yes. So I just wanted to give you an update on the north outbuilding. That's the expansion of the metal fab shop area. We did go to bid. The bids were very good. The low bidder was Sever Construction Work. The lowest qualified bidder was Sever Construction out of Woburn, S E A V E R, really good company. As you may recall, our architects K B A, we hired them six, seven months ago to manage the process of bidding along with our district office. The bid for, we've budgeted around seven hundred thousand dollars for this. The bid for the, the building, the slab floor, the doors, the rooftop fans came in at around a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The, we're waiting upon, we should have it this week, a more detailed project timeline with substantial completion of the building sometime in June of two thousand twenty-two. And then we will be working with our, our own trades students, electrical plumbing, carpentry to finish off the inside of the building. And we're going to take that through the summer and into the fall and have it be a work-based learning project. So it'll be up and ready and running probably late fall, two thousand twenty-two. We, we, the East Campus Development Project, that's the veterinary clinic area. I did recently this week get an okay from the regional office to directly contact corporate headquarters of Blue Pearl to discuss a partnership with them in more detail, understanding fully that any kind of public part, public-private partnership would need to go out to bid. But I wanted to just talk with them and see where they're at because they've been great about donating time, materials, equipment. But I, I really want their money. So so I'm going to work towards getting a, getting a meeting with them and see how that goes. We have some friends within their corporate headquarters and I'll be working through those folks. And then we sent you this afternoon a letter that I received this morning from the town administrator of Lincoln. And then we had a meeting this afternoon that Ford will kind of give us the high altitude view and then I'll answer any other questions.
You have received the letter and I'm sure you, you've read it. We had a meeting today with our corporate attorney and the Staniska and the Council Booz was represented along with members, some members of the staff. So the idea is, is we will come back to you on February eighth at our next meeting to discuss in more detail. We're working on a strategy and a plan to do this. So that's where we're going is we'll come back to you on February.
And that'll be an executive session. Anthony?
Can I just see if there's any questions first before we move on?
Absolutely.
I don't see any, but I just want to take a moment. Okay.
Anthony's given us the update as of today.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. So this is just again, the updated application information as of this morning. Excuse me. So, you know, as you can see, applications are up as they have been the entire process so far this year. So this is a twelve percent increase from last year and it's almost a twenty percent increase from the class of two thousand twenty-four. Again, you can see from a town-by-town standpoint, you know, all towns are either, you know, just at where they have been or above, as you can see, significant increases from Concord, which I've brought up several times. That's the most glaring increase. That's a, you know, from two thousand twenty-four, that's a, you know, that's over a hundred percent increase in two years. So, you know, again, we're doing very well in terms of applications. We are in the process of interviewing these students. Currently, we've earned, interviewed a hundred. So far, we have another sixty-one scheduled and this is the time of year where we start reaching out more proactively to get these interviews. We do it in bulk and then we have to start going through the schools. We try to, you know, knock as many off before we have to individually call every family who hasn't scheduled their interview. We want to ensure that they've gotten the information. And if they are interested in Minuteman are able to complete the process so that they are then considered a qualified applicant, which is what you need to be in order to be admitted to the school. So, you know, based on my, based on historical kind of, you know, the percentage of students who accept their offers of admission, I would conservatively guess that we need between two hundred and ten and two hundred and twenty qualified applicants to meet our hundred and seventy-five student class of two thousand twenty-six. I think we'll be able to do that with students who meet our February fifteenth priority deadline. Although I don't think they're honestly going to be considered. I know that, you know, water, the Watertown discussion is coming up in a bit here. So I'll just briefly mention that we have seventy-one out of district applications so far, which is a little bit more than last year. And Watertown is the town that has the most out of any out-of-district town, which with fourteen, which is relatively in line with what they typically have. So a little bit less. But this is with no marketing, no recruiting, literally no discussion with anyone in the town. It's, you know, based on word of mouth and reputation. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Any questions? Jeff.
Okay, so since we have more applicants from in the district and fewer slots this year, right? We're only allowing a hundred by a hundred and seventy-five in. There is a, is it true that there's a reasonable chance that we will have a significant waiting list for in-district students this year? Or is there something I'm missing?
No, I would chance that we will, yeah, I mean, significant, depending on how you define that, I would say, this is a guess and I was talking to someone about this earlier, but really high number would be like, you know, forty to fifty, more reasonably, probably in the twenty to thirty. So it's significant because it's always been zero. But yes, that's, these are guesses, but that's just based on the data I would, you know.
I would say, I would say that more than ten to me is significant. And if we're talking numbers that are far exceed that, then we're going to have to have, as I mentioned in the C A meeting, a lot of discussions with people when their children are not able to come to the school. So we should be prepared for that.
Yeah. And I would, Jeff, just to kind of, you know, connect with that. I would say that students who don't meet this February fifteenth deadline, I mean, it's, it's not going to, it's, I, of the students who apply by February fifteenth, yes, we will have a waiting list from some students from that. I, I hope it's, yes, maybe ten, right? Ten, twenty, which is significant historically, but is not a, you know, outrageous percentage of students. But yeah, if there, if there are kids who are applying late, I mean, we'll be honest with them. We always are. We'll be transparent and let them know that we will, we will put you through the process. We will interview you. We will get your records, but you know, your, your, your chances are going to be pretty slim.
Any other questions for Anthony?
No other questions?
Thank you.
Shall we move on to to Watertown?
Yes. You bet. Remember back in July, the school committee voted for me to explore the impact of adding towns to the district. And we focused on Watertown. So you see in your packet, beginning on page six is a letter from me to Pam as the chair, basically suggesting that we formally re- Basically suggesting that um, we formally reach out to Watertown. And we drafted a letter from Pan to John Port's Chairman of the Watertown School Committee. Um, to that effect. I reviewed this with the officers, we made some changes and adjustments. Also this afternoon, we sent out in the packet. Uh, DeeDee Gladston, the superintendent of Watertown, put out a superintendent's report. Fifty-some-odd pages on C T E, uh, high-quality career tech ed in Watertown. And you can see that Minuteman is, is, is mentioned throughout it and actually the last seven or eight pages. Is our regional agreement. Um, they've formed an ad hoc committee. So I think the time is right to make a formal outreach. Um, some of the school committee know that over the last ten years. Um, we've made several. When I say we, myself and Kevin Mahoney. Went and met with the school committee of Watertown along with some um, city council members. Cause they have a city or a town council form of government, they don't have a town meeting. And had great discussions, real open about it all. Um. We, we've gone a few times, we've done financial analysis, which Kevin has updated that analysis as well. Um, I also had um, Anthony completed an analysis of what the impact of Watertown's. Um, membership would be on slot allocations for current member towns. And it was uh, between one and four slots per town would be reduced. If we added Watertown in at its current projected enrollment, which. I'll have to mention is, has been declining rapidly every, every year. Um, you know, traditionally Watertown had sixty or seventy kids in it. Sometimes it was our second largest sending community after Watertown. So that hasn't, you know, that's the assumption we made if they joined in F Y twenty. Uh, July of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but that would be their impact on the slot allocation. Now that was assuming a hundred and sixty freshmen. So um, if we have a hundred, if we're back up to two hundred. And our capacity can handle that, it would be a little bit different, but we had to use today's. Uh, reality uh, in projecting. So we also consulted with our attorney about the language within the. The, the letters here. Which we softened up a little bit. And uh. I think that's all I have for background. There is a vote. Um, to ha- instruct the. I don't know exactly what the vote says, to actually send the letter, I guess.
So moved as written. Second. Okay. So we have a, a motion and a second. Um, are there questions or comments? Jeff?
So, uh, two comments. The first one is, I think that if Watertown were to join, I think our argument for increasing the capacity of school to two hundred. To, uh, sorry, eight hundred, two hundred a year. Would be easier to make because that would actually reduce member, other members' assessments. So, um, I think that uh. I think that we would, we would be making it to a eight-hundred student school in pretty quick time if Watertown was to join the district. The only other thing is that this could be completely irrelevant because I don't understand what the term means, but I was skimming this report. And they kept mentioning as Medford is a preferred school. So I don't quite understand what that meant in the um, the document.
Um, that's a vestige, a leftover from. The currently in operation solved collaborative. You remember that?
Uh, unfortunately, I do remember that.
Yes, I do too and notice how calm I am. So yeah, and Medford, uh, I, they also mentioned Waltham in there. Um. The, the, the practical reality of that actually being some sort of option for kids is that they would have to. Have some sort of marvelous schedule that. That um, most parents haven't seen yet that would allow them to remain as a Watertown High School student and yet. Participate in vocational education in Medford. So I think that's, it also diverts um, attention to the Minuteman option as really being the most viable one for them. Even if they build a new school, which they've uh. They have uh, approved, they're in the pipeline and they have C T E programs on. In, in the uh, plan, I haven't seen the educational program plan for C T E. It wa- I think it would be more of something of the, uh, like what you see in Newton Public Schools. Uh, where Newton North has um, C T E programs where kids go two periods a day or three periods a day or less. So uh. Without getting deep into those weeds, I think that's a vestige of the solved collaborative floating around in people's minds.
Um, Alice, do your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, I should have said, uh, when I made the motion that we need to um. Uh, include the percentage vote in the letter if that is. Left in the letter, because it's in parentheses and caps.
Any other questions about that, Mike?
Mike.
Are, are the uh, terms on which we would admit a new member town uh, to be discussed or are they governed by parameters that? Uh, would, would, would fix the negotiating points?
The, the process is, is well-defined in the, in the revised regional agreement. Uh, basically, at a high level, what would happen is that the town council or city council in Watertown would have to vote. Prior to December fifteenth. To join, and then we would have to take that to all of our uh, member towns. And all of the member towns would have to approve that because it is a revision of our regional agreement. And then the July first, following that approval, they would become a member. So it's a long process that goes through the town meeting, so. Town meetings have a opportunity to weigh in, ask questions and, and approve it or not. I believe. We have to have unanimous um. Approval. In other words, all town meetings.
I, I know my town meeting will, will be asking, what are you gonna charge them for coming to this brand-new building?
That's laid out in the uh, in the revised regional agreement as well, and that's part of the analysis that we did for them. They would get their share based upon the four-year rolling average enrollment, just like a member town. There is an option to do a, a four-year escalation, which I would not even uh, consider. Um, because it would make no difference because their enrollment is so low now. Um, that it would really gradually ramp up on its own. When we were considering letting them, when we were. Frankly, trying to get them to join, when they were sixty or seventy kids, the capital costs of joining were sort of uh. Well, they were large. And so the. The, the committee, which was made up of sixteen town members, different town, towns. I came up with this escalation that this entire Minuteman School Committee would have to approve first. So there's no, there's no, um, well, I. Probably won't be superintendent when you're having this discussion, but there's no way this superintendent would give them any break for joining at this point. In terms of a capital escalation clause, but Alice reminds me, I wanna be friendly and nice.
Alice?
Uh, there are so many advantages to both Minuteman and Watertown from uh, such an arrangement. It's. I mean, you could go on for an entire meeting talking about them, but since I have to do the minutes, I'm not going to.
Other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion on the table. Um, if there's nothing else, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave Willoughby Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Lealie Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Okay, thank you. And with that, um, we will remember to um. Put in the, change the percentage here in the letter to unanimous. Okay, um. Okay, going back to my agenda, um, Steve, you're back up? Or actually, Ed, anything else?
No.
Okay, Steve, rest of the finance report.
Well, base uh. Finance committee uh, met last night and uh, we did get a presentation from Ed. Um, on his latest iteration of the budget, which I believe he's gonna present to you uh, in a moment, and I just wanted to let uh. Uh, the entire school committee know that the finance subcommittee uh, recommends uh, the budget that uh, the superintendent will be presenting.
Okay.
Okay, uh, just thank you. Just a reminder that on the twenty-seventh of January, we have a public hearing. Scheduled and the way that we've normally done that is we open up for a public hearing. And we hear comments and questions from the, I'll make the presentation. We hear comments and questions from the public. And then the school committee, we closed the public hearing and then the school committee has a. Uh, a meeting to discuss the budget, so this is not that meeting. This is just to give you a sense of where we're at. We sent you the PowerPoint, I think it's version five point one. And then the budget book, which is version five, which accompanies the presentation, and I know you haven't had time to digest it. You know, we're, I'm giving it to you two weeks before the public hearing, which I think is. Is good. And, and as we get more information, we'll make some adjustments, but basically. Uh, and then we have a snow day. If we're not able to meet on the twenty-seventh, the following Tuesday, I think it's February third. Is um. Let me see if I can get this. Can y'all see that? Slideshow. Oops, I need to move it. Need to move you guys over there and then move that here.
Just uh, February third is the following Thursday.
Yes, that's the day. So is that, all y'all see that pretty good now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go through it kinda quickly. I can't see everybody in the way I could. So if there's a question, Pam, just let me know. I can only see three or four.
Okay. Yeah, I can see everyone.
Okay. So just to um, remind folks, we are, this budget is in support of our school-wide goals. We've had. Pretty much the same seven or eight goals for the last decade. We obviously look at them every year, we review them, reprioritize them based upon the year that we're facing. Um, again, keeping people safe um, through this pandemic. I thought we'd be having a different number one priority, but. You can see those. So overall, the budget is up less than five percent. Um, but the assessments are up fifteen percent, and that's the story I'm gonna be trying to tell over and over again. As we go to town fincom meetings, warrant committee meetings, tri-county or tri-town meetings. Um, because we're going through a transition and I'm hoping to try to explain that. The priorities that we have for this year are obviously protecting student health and staff health. Um, we're addressing social, emotional learning needs in this budget. You'll see how that is being proposed. Want to continue to deliver and promote high-quality career and technical education, advance the Minuteman model. As we talked about earlier this evening, increasing the capacity, the facility. Our athletic fields, as Ford described, will be up and running. We need to be managing them. Um, and also along with that goes the, the full. Uh, utilization of the campus and the, and the potential rental revenue from that. And uh, as I spoke with Kevin Mahoney and some of the team a few days ago. We are gonna close out the M S B A project in the next fiscal year sometime, hopefully the end of two thousand twenty-two, perhaps the spring of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the drivers in our budget, um. The teacher's contract, to remind you, we're in year three next year of a three-year contract, which is a two percent. So you'll have to open negotiations at some point next fiscal year. Health insurance, we're part of a trust with four other vocational schools. We're conservatively estimating a ten percent increase. Because the trust hasn't finalized their rates yet, we try to be conservative here. Our transportation contract has built in a five percent increase based upon the Consumer Price Index. Uh, utilities up a bit. Uh, hopefully in F Y twenty-four and beyond, we'll have a better. Handle on our utilities and what the contribution of our affordable take overlay uh, district is. Opab, you can see uh, that hundred and twenty thousand voted on earlier this evening is in there. We're also looking to replace two of our, on our field trip work site buses that we own. Uh, just this week, the Massachusetts C E C came out with a. I don't know if it was an R F P or uh, to buy electric buses. So we're, we're gonna look into that, because that would be a great uh, opportunity to incorporate that into our auto mechanics program as well. And we can make a lot of cases there in, in the, in the grant application. But we are lease purchasing two, and that's about fifty thousand a year. We have s- eight buses in our fleet right now. Two of them are more than fifteen years old, so they need to be replaced. We had some problems earlier this year. The capital stabilization fund uh, is supported to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars in this budget. So to break it out a bit, our operating budget is up about six and a half percent. Our operating capital, which includes the ESCO payment, as well as the first payment on our field lights. Is up a large percentage, but it's, it's only about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And our M S B A project is, i- is uh, projected to be less. Based upon how we structured the borrowing, we're gonna have a little dip in that. There's not gonna be a major increase. But it's nice to have this little dip going into this year. Enrollment, we uh, are projecting seven hundred kids next fall. That's based upon a class of a hundred and seventy-five freshmen. Uh, this slide that I'd had before, we were, we realized that we were still accommodating a t- class of two hundred freshmen, so. We made that adjustment. And the story here is, you'll see, our member town enrollment is increasing, our non-member town enrollment. Is decreasing, uh, and that shift has an incredible. Impact on revenue. Um, you know, for thirty years, Minuteman has used. A non-member revenue to offset assessments to member towns. So as our in-district enrollment increases, out-of-district revenue, including the capital fee. Decreases resulting in more of the operating cost falling on our member towns. So this is a, is a, a busy slide, but it's really uh, beautiful. It, it communicates a lot as you reflect on it. And if you look at the blue line up at the top. I can do this. This is the millions of dollars a, a year that we've been able to use to offset member assessments. In F Y eighteen, it was almost four million dollars. And if you combine that with the non-member capital fee line, which is below here. You can see in F Y twenty-one, we had four point seven million dollars to offset. Member town assessments, and you can see as enrollment is growing from our member towns. Those numbers are going down, and in F Y twenty-five, it'll probably be zero or it won't be significant. Uh, we also put in here this green line across the top, which shows the six hundred and twenty-eight as our capacity. As the design enrollment capacity. So this tells a, tells a story. You can see the declining member town enrollment, the increasing. Or the declining non-member town enrollment, the increasing overall enrollment, which is really a function of increased member enrollment. If there's one slide in this whole presentation that's gonna help us get our budgets passed, it's the one I just showed you. Uh, just, the, this is a whole set of bullets on what uh, we're focused on in regards to. You know, our really robust communications strategy and tactics. You know, maintaining member enrollment, the Minuteman Technical Institute, which is um. I think ready to take off. We have a new website coming up. Uh, legislative communications are gonna be more important than ever next fiscal year as we consider the um. Uh, the infrastructure bill that was passed at the federal level coming down to us also. The state passed a, a four-point-two-billion-dollar budget, a hundred million of that is slated for C T E facilities. budget, 100 million of that is slated for CTE facilities and building capacity. We want to continue to enlighten the perceptions of our member towns around the value of a Minuteman education. We, you know, girl STEM, girl steam programs were sort of put on pause with COVID. We want to make sure we're focused on getting students non-traditional for their gender, gender interested in Minuteman. This applications and enrollment was as of last week, we'll need to update that, but it just tells the story of the increasing member town enrollment. And just note that the class of 2025, our current freshman, 95% of them are from our member towns. Again, this is a summary of the, of the operating budget, the capital operating request and the MSBA project debt. We have some staffing additions, some staffing reductions. This budget supports two new student support professionals. We don't know who will be able to hire, whether it would be like a social worker or an adjustment counselor or a school psychologist. Those folks are tough to find right now, but that, those staff is in here. The web and programming program has had a one teacher has been a one teacher department for two years, I believe. We have one teacher and an aide in there now. The enrollment is such that we're going to eliminate the aide position and add it upgraded to a teaching position. Sort of the reverse of this has been our logistics engineering robotics automation teacher, which we've been unable to fill for two years. We're sort of saying, okay, well, let's go with the workforce as it is. And let's get a robotics automation logistics aide to help the two existing engineering teachers. Because we did get another $150,000 capital skills grant. And so we're going to be buying equipment and it's going to be coming in before the end of this fiscal year. We want to make sure we have someone who's got some experience in logistics engineering here. Helping us incorporate that more deeply into our day programs as well as the MTI programs. We've added an HR support administrative support specialist. And then a point five library reading aid. And FY 24, that should be a full-time position, but we want to make sure that we support reading in Minuteman, which is one of our core values that we value reading across the curriculum. And I'll remind you, we won an award for that. Positions not being rehired or that were reduced, an internal suspension professional. Massachusetts has a requirement that if you have an internal school suspension program, it must be staffed by a person who's licensed as an instructor. We have had so few kids in ISS that we don't feel like a full-time person is needed. We can cover this with our existing full-time subs. And again, we didn't, the program web aide logistics engineering teacher, HR director. So there's a net increase of one and a half FTEs in this budget. Our, our priorities in CTE, animal science and logistics engineering. As you all know, material prices have been increasing. With equipment, supply chain issues have caused prices to rise. We're not, we're hoping they come down a little bit, but we had to meet halfway in there. And so we've had some increases across the board. We're providing occupational program uniforms and safety equipment and clothing for students in specific occupational programs. That's really to provide equity across the board. We, we're finding that some students who are, had been responsible for buying their own shop clothing, whether it was in allied health or in automotive or welding that we just wanted to make sure that all students were being treated equally and getting the same value. Student credentialing, the reason I highlight this is that traditionally these tests had been in grants. They've now had to move to our district budget. But it shows you some of the distinctive industry recognized credentials that our students earn while they're in Minuteman. And just for an example, the EMT training program, which is offered to our seniors, and we're also going to be offering it during the summer for those seniors who might be on co-op, that's about $1,250 per student. Also state board exams. It sort of goes along with our no cut, no fee policy in athletics. We ought to be applying that across the board to industry recognized credentials as well. And we're getting more intentional and broad-based about that in this budget. So how are we going to get to beyond 628? Well, the goal of the school committee is to accommodate 800 kids with no increase in debt. There's two core strategies to do that. One is to consistently fund the capital stabilization account, which I believe we created in 2016. This budget adds a half a million to that. Our projected account balance as of July 1st, even after paying for the $700,000 for the North Building, we'll have a balance in, in there about 1.4 million. Which is a, which is good. So the capacity building project that I mentioned earlier opening in the late fall, over four years, we're being conservative there. What, that would increase our capacity by 32 students. Strategy two, which is leveraging strategic partnerships and grants. Our objective there is to get the vet assisting clinic operational. It's in design. The goal is to have it open in the fall of 2023. And if we just look at that east campus building and we just put a vet clinic in there and the only program in there is the vet assisting program, that would increase our capacity by 60 students over four years. If we're able to renovate the whole building and add more classroom space and lab space, we could easily add more students than that. OPEB liability. That's our liability, estimated liability as of June 30th, 2022. Our trust fund balance and just a note, I don't think we mentioned it in earlier discussion, but two years ago, our net liability was $32 million. So it really, you can see how it fluctuates and I think Jim Gammel's report and the FinCom report was really a, I don't know, I feel better about OPEB and I've never really cared if I felt better about OPEB, but I do. Strategic components, we always mention those. I want to make sure the, the public knows this and our member towns know this. This is just what we voted for earlier this evening. And this is a detail of year over year in our operating budget, capital and equipment leases, the, the MSBA building debt. See. This is a, a look at our revenue again. And if you look at the far right column, you can see we've lost. Not, I don't know how to say it without, well, we've lost, you know, 50% of our prior year tuition. 12% of our current year tuition. That's the money we're going to collect next year. And we up that. Certified E and D, we've upped that as well. The capital fee, which we worked so hard to get. We've kind of, you know, be careful what you hope for and what you work towards, because when you get it, this is what happens. So we're in a transition. I really think we're in a transition over the next two years of transitioning the costs of operating the district to the member towns. That's what we were asked to do and we've done it. This is where the components of the assessment and for each town will have an individual slide that shows how your town's assessment was formulated. And I have, I have those, that data now. We're reviewing it again for each individual town that has this. It also has enrollment on it. So you can see the town's increase in enrollment and a pretty corresponding increase in the total assessment. So our FY 23 budget were your consideration. And I'll ask any questions, take any comments. And of course, as we go forward, you know, we'll be developing this in a customized way for each town as we prepare for your town meeting.
Any questions tonight, Judy?
An immense amount of work. Thank you so much, everyone who had a hand in this. Thank you. Surprises, but nothing that we really didn't hear whispers about prior to tonight. Two things, Dr. B, you mentioned that you have the individual town assessments. I know Lexington is, you know, we've had a placeholder for a while, so if we could forward that along, that'd be much appreciated.
Yeah, we sent an update to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Nikki, didn't we send an update to Lexington this past week?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, both of you. And this is, my next request is just something for me. Because we're going to be meeting tomorrow night through the chair, Madam Chair, could we, could I please have a hard copy of the PowerPoint and for the budget addendum that we received at four o'clock tonight?
Oh, you want a hard copy tomorrow in person? Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if that's okay, only because we're getting together anyways. So
Yeah.
I'll say, thank you, Julia, and thank you all.
Thank you. So it'll be possible to have hard copies for everyone available.
Yep, they'll be all appropriately sanitized.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking of that, Judy. Jeff?
This is a incredibly meaty proposal. In terms of the actual hard information per slide is far beyond that of most presentations and it's not going to be for the faint of heart at town meeting. There's just too much detail in it for them. For me, it's fabulous. For the finance committees, it gets fabulous. But it's just incredibly dense because there's so many topics of importance that are explained in more detail than one usually sees. So I say that is a, a great positive. I do have a question and possibly a request. The question is, considering explaining the 15% assessment increase, is the following accurate? That the primary driver of that 15% assessment increase is the fact that member towns are sending more students to the school, therefore their assessments go up. At the same time, we're getting less money from out of district students to reduce assessments. Is that the primary driver of that 15% assessment increase or am I, are there other major factors in there?
That's the primary drivers.
Okay, then here's the request.
That's simple.
Could there be, I know that it is in there in some of the slides, but could there be an explanatory page saying exactly that, that it is not overspending? It is not a huge increase in capital. It is not just, you know, grabbing money from here and there. It's primarily the thing that they've asked for, for 20 years, which is more member towns coming and fewer out of district people coming. If that is indeed the reason, the primary reason for the 15% increase, having that on a separate sheet clearly demonstrated would be very valuable to me for explaining this to people.
So I, I've prepared a document for you, Jeff.
Already?
Yes, and it's on page four and five of the budget book. There's an executive summary. We can, I know you'll want to massage it. Or we can do that for you, make it even with some bullet points and all that, but that describes. I think someone said today, I think it was George in our meeting this morning. He said, I think the theme of this budget would, should be, be careful what you hope for.
Right, and we all knew that. We all knew that, right? We were, they told us that wasn't the case. They told us that it wasn't going to happen. And here we are, that exact thing that we predicted is happening to an extreme, even more than I would have guessed.
Yeah, take a look at those pages because I think, I think that you'll be happy with them. I'm, I know you're going to be ecstatic with them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
To Jeff's question, the finance committee has been working on just this point. The graphics in, in the budget presentation, lots of bars and lines. But the story they tell is as, as, as one end of the teeter totter goes down, the other end as one end of the teeter totter goes down, budget wise, the other end has to come up. And it has been great in, in providing us with, with what I've been calling the narrative of, you know, the, the, the story that continues through all the data. I'm confident that we'll be able to make people understand.
Alice?
If I were to, if someone feels a question about MTI and, and hunts for it in the budget book, they won't find it. So we need to have some explanation of where that lives. As far as I can find it, I can't find it anyway.
No, there's only one line item. It's not even, we'd have to have an addendum. I think it's time to do that. We've never had an addendum on MTI in this.
I think it's a good idea because you've mentioned it in your, in your descriptions and it's a significant thing. It's really very important. Needs, I like the idea of it, addendum.
Yeah, because it operates under a revolving fund. Even though the, and I think Steve, we're planning on looking at the budget for MTI and revolving fund budgets. After we get the, this budget approved, so in February.
Yeah, that would be helpful. The other thing that my town, it depends on who's, you know, interested, but there are people who get excited about grant funding and where that lives. It has its own page and in the budget book, but I don't, I don't see where it kind of integrates with the rest of the budget. So I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question, I guess. So I would need some, I would need some more understanding of that.
Good, that's, yep.
Okay, are there questions or comments? So Ed or Steve, is there anything else you need from the school committee right now?
No, as, 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 you know, as stated, we'll, we'll have a, a required public hearing on the 27th and then the board can discuss and vote a budget. So really not, no other actions required tonight from the board.
A terrific job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks to everyone.
Lots of work went into this, yes.
Well, Nikki was great. I'd describe a spreadsheet or chart and then she would make it and then I, I could edit it myself. You know, it was great. No, thank you. I think I learned how to do some stuff too.
Thank you. That's terrific. Thank you, Nikki. Um, let's move on to the committee reports. CAA, Jeff?
I have virtually nothing to say because everything was pretty much already covered. Just two quick comments. The first is in the back of my mind, again, I'm just putting in the back of my mind, not doing anything about it, is the fact that we will have a lot of unhappy parents this year. So it's likely to be. And we'll hear about it. And the second thing is my understanding is that the revised website is going to come live in a week or two. That's the last I heard about that. So if that is going to happen, that may happen in the near future. That's something we've been looking forward to for a very long time.
Yeah, you may have heard last week that the company we were working with was held hostage because of you know, wanting money to release their code final site. Did you hear that? What do you call that? I forget what you call that.
Ransomware.
Ransomware, thank you. They were a victim of ransomware. So fortunately, we hadn't released anything. And I guess as of this week, early this week, the, the The final site. Is fine, they've. They're, they're not, they were released or whatever, so I think that may delay us a few days, but. I hope before the budget hearing, we have it up and going, so.
And it works.
One thing at a time.
That's it. That's all I have to say. Everything else is covered.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Ford.
Thank you. The report really should be, it's the superintendent finalist. Group, that's what we are, we're beyond the screening. Last Wednesday, January five, we had Dr. Amy Peralt with us for the day. And into the evening and I believe that went very well. From what I'm hearing and told. I really want to thank you all for the job that you all did. You get, you've now had one session, you're going to get better over the next two. But that went well and I, and the staff that's helping us out on this is just doing a great job. Tomorrow, we have Kevin McCaskill will be with us. I just wanted to sort of tell you that. The schedule, because you know, you can come at eleven fifteen, he arrives twelve o'clock, he's going to have lunch, the student ambassadors, twelve thirty. For an hour, he's going to have a tour of the student ambassadors. I was told that their enthusiasm is incredible. And they are very proud to be able to perform this function and. So that's working out well, that. One thirty-five, he has a tour of the campus with Rich and I think that's a very worthwhile event. Two forty-five, he will meet with the Minuteman faculty that is zoomed also. Mostly in person, we had about sixty-five, six. Faculty members at that, that session, both in person, Zoom, which is terrific. We, at five o'clock, there is a Zoom meeting with Parents Advisory Committee Town Officials. I don't have my notes with me, but I think we were pretty close to thirty. Attendees and the questions, which was a big help. And then we all get to spend a couple of hours starting at seven o'clock. Be the same drill as we went before, so. Be ready for. Another long evening. We do the same the following Wednesday on the. Nineteenth, Dr. Kathleen Dawson will be with us for the exact same drill and then on the twenty-sixth, I just want to remind you. That is the evening that we will do our deliberations and vote for whatever decision we make. So January is very, very, very busy month for the school committee and I thank you all. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Ford. I don't know if people know how many thousands of billions of hours Ford has put into making these things go so well and. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't mention that.
He's very well paid.
But that's because it's a team event and the team is consisting of nine members, so.
Yes, thank you, Ford. Michael.
Thanks, Ford. Is, what is or is there an avenue for comments, impressions of? These other folks that are, that are participating in, in the process. Showing the candidates around the school, the faculty members, the members of the public. What is the avenue for those impressions coming back to us, the voting members?
There is a, a site, Julie, you probably can explain it better than I can, but. There's a site that people can send in their comments, questions, whatever they want and we will. Have those available on the twenty-seventh, the school committee and they're all written, so you will get everyone that's sent in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judy.
I'm confused. You said the twenty-seventh, but we're voting on.
Excuse me, I apologize.
Okay.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you for catching me on the twentieth.
Thank you, thank you.
So we, we will review dates. You know, before we end the meeting because there's a lot coming up. So. Any other questions for Ford?
I just, I put in the chat the link to. Where people can make a comment on the superintendent. It's on that page and there's a form to click on.
And I think, you know, I'm going to be at the school early tomorrow. I will talk to Julia, even though I know she's listening. I think we need to advertise that more fully.
Okay. I think. Last thing left on our agenda is the secretary's report. Alice.
I was on mute. I didn't get any comments on the minutes.
Do we have a motion to approve the draft minutes of December fourteenth?
I moved.
Second. Any, any comment? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stoyes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, just to, before we adjourn, just to recap. Tomorrow, January twelfth, we will be, have. Meeting with candidates. January nineteenth, we will meet with candidates. A candidate on the twenty-sixth, the school committee will meet to deliberate. On the twenty-seventh, we will have our budget hearing. So those are upcoming dates in January.
Is the budget hearing in person or on Zoom?
Isn't it?
We, we, yes, it's remote.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
We are live and in person.
Yeah. So. So with that, any, anything else that anyone has to add? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Toluca Stoyes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I look forward to seeing you all in person tomorrow. Be sure to test.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.